This conference will now be recorded.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everybody. It's Tuesday, September 10th, 2024, with a weekly super regular meeting at the courthouse. It's available by go-to meeting also and also recorded for future viewing. Agenda in front of us. Have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve.
Motion is our second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Approve the minutes of the September 3rd meeting and claim. I just had one claim, Rich, there's a bill in there for broning, for rock.
Yeah.
Are they gonna trade us rock?
We, we used their rock, we used our surplus, and then we continue to use it for our road grade project. So that's why we've got it in there.
Okay.
It's a pretty close quarry, so we might utilize a little bit more of it.
Sure. Motion, is there a second?
A second.
Any other discussion?
We'll call Jim.
Aye.
Sidney, Mike.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
County Attorney General discussion.
One thing I wanted to discuss was, I think I left it all where? Last week regarding that opioid litigation that's going on, you know, among various counties and states nationwide. And so, just to kind of shortcut a little bit. And so this will be repetitive of probably what I put in that email to you, but it keeps my thoughts on track. So, last week, I and probably every county or entity that's a part of this whole opioid thing, we got a notice, you know, there's a law firm, well, there's one, it's like around Milwaukee that I see that get things from most of the time. This is kind of like one of those class action lawsuits. I don't know, I'm not a class action lawyer, so I might be not using the right words, but basically, you know, that law firm and whoever they work with runs everything, right? The rest of us, we just get notices and stuff like that. And, and they're the attorneys representing. So, got an email last week that, and I think I sent to you, that basically said, hey, we need to know on what date you instructed your county to put like a litigation preservation hold on certain documents, right? And what that means is, in litigation sometimes, and you'll hear about it once in a while on the news, a judge or somebody will order everybody to preserve all documents, don't destroy it. Well, generally speaking, at least in litigation world I live in, which is way different than that, I realize, but you're not really supposed to start destroying stuff anyway. So, so that, what a judge orders, that, they're really kind of just re-saying what already is the law. Don't be destroying stuff. Don't be destroying key evidence and stuff like that. Now, every once in a while, something can get destroyed accidentally because nobody really knew it was important. Now, I think the reason this came up, from what I understand, which some of us are just trying to read between the lines because I'm not really involved in this litigation, somewhere along the line, somebody, I don't know whether it was a county or some other entity somewhere in the United States, probably one of the bigger players of the whole thing, there must have been some question about whether they or maybe the companies or who was preserving information, right? So, so, and this is all stuff that I learned last week. So, a judge back 2018, maybe a little before, I think it was 2018, judge in the case said, hey, I am just gonna put this order in effect that says, nobody destroy anything. And I, as a judge, am gonna order you attorneys to notify all of your clients to keep everything. And then, whoever that representative of the county is, is supposed to let everybody else in the county presumably be honored or mostly, but you guys two, no, don't be destroying stuff. Okay? So, so, so the background is, somewhere back in 2018 or somewhere around there, a judge would have ordered counties, preserve all your stuff. Law firm, you advise all your counties, preserve all this stuff. And then whoever gets the notice from the county, you need to advise your people in the county, don't destroy stuff. Okay? So, this email I get last week says, hey, we need to know what date you guys advised your county not to destroy stuff. Come out of the blue for me, you know, because in 2018, I wasn't in this process. So, I emailed the lady back and I said, well, you're gonna have to tell me, you know, you're referencing some date that you advised everybody to preserve stuff, you have, what date was that? You know, I don't know. I don't have anything in the files I have. So she emailed back and she said, well, we sent a notice out, and I don't remember the exact date. I think it might have been somewhere in time in April, maybe of 2018. But she, she said, we notified, you know, county attorney's office in like April of 2018. So, I didn't, I wasn't involved in the process at that time. So I did ask Mark, I said, does this ring a bell to you? He's like, eh, done ringed it. No, it, it doesn't. So, so the bottom line is, I'm supposed to advise this law firm what date we put a litigation hold or preservation of evidence order in effect, right? I don't know what date that was. I don't know, you know, I can't point to anything, Mark can't either, that says that any instructions went out. You know, I don't have to, you know, my files start much later. Now, generally speaking, I would imagine, I don't know this, I'm speculating, I would imagine that just part of standard procedure, Mark probably, I don't know, I think he and I kind of operate the same way. He probably would have sent something out to somebody, maybe just, he might have just, somebody sent him an email, he may have just forwarded the damn thing on, right? He said, here, see this. I don't know. I have no idea. And some of that language is buried so much in some of those other documents that he may not even see it. Yeah, I, I don't know. But what I know is, this law firm wants to know, and they're asking all entities and counties and clients across the United States, what date did you instruct your county to preserve evidence? And if you, if you don't, if you don't have, you know, an answer, then, you know, this law firm is saying, well, then you can't proceed with this part of litigation. Okay? Now, this doesn't affect it in the opioid settlements from before. It's just some of this, some of the ones are still going on among like Walmart and different people. I don't know how it compares in size to the other settlements, but anyway, in this current litigation, you know, the law firm is saying, if you guys don't have an answer, then the judge, you probably won't be able to proceed in the case because judge wants to know when all that, those holds were cut in place. That's the, the background. So, I don't know, you know, I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, I don't know when anybody was advised of anything or if anybody was advised of anything. And, Mark doesn't remember either, so. What I, you guys have to decide, I mean, I need to respond, preferably probably by the end of today, with, with, with something, either saying, oh, here's the date we did it, or I don't have any idea. And I, I don't like to play hard and fast with the law at all, especially when you're dealing with federal judges, and so I'm not about to say something that I cannot verify. What I could do is just simply say something to the effect of, well, if we, if, if, if the office got the notice on whatever date, I've got that date, April whatever, 2018, that our standard practice would have been to probably forward it off at that time. That's probably the best I could, that's probably the best I could do, right? And see if that's good enough or not. I don't know what else to say. I don't know how much money we're talking typically, you know, as you find out in these opioid settlements. And again, I don't, it's, I don't know if it's technically class action or not, because it's a whole different world, but just like, you know, when you hear about a lot of these class actions, you'll, you'll, you'll hear about these massive sums of money being paid, massive sums. But by the time it trickles down to the clients, it's usually very little, right? Like, everybody here is probably familiar with, you get those notices in the mail. I got one a while back, I don't remember who it was, I don't even want to say because I don't want to slander some company accidentally, but it was some, some company being part, being sued as part of class action. And of course, it said, you know, Aaron and Becky Murphy, you're automatically in this class unless you opt out. It's like, I don't care, I don't know what's going on, you know? So I think we threw it away. Well, somewhere down the line, what we might get like a dollar ninety-nine, four doc, four bucks, five bucks as a part of some class act. Who really makes money in class actions is attorneys, which, you know, I'm not saying anything bad about it. But, so, you know, bottom line is, is like in the last settlement, it, I think it amounts to a few thousand dollars over a certain period of time, per year. This, I assume is similar. I mean, I don't know that we're talking about a particular large sum of money, but I mean, even if, I mean, if somebody's, if you're, if you're entitled to fifty bucks a year, you may as well try and get it. So I guess the bottom sort of it is, if you wanted me to, I could just respond and say, as near as I can tell, the practice probably would have been forward something on that same day or day. You know? They may say, well, that isn't good enough. And we'll say, well, I, I don't know what else to tell you. I mean, I'm not about, I mean, let's be hon, I mean, Mitchell County didn't, Mitchell County didn't destroy anything, right? I mean, at least not on purpose anymore than what the else does. So I'm not very concerned about that at all, right? I mean, there's nobody involved at the time or here that was doing anything to destroy any evidence, right? So that notice really isn't even directed toward us. So, I mean, if I were to say, oh, it was April twenty-seventh, 2018 that we notified everybody, probably nothing's gonna happen because I don't think anything would ever come back where somebody would say, oh, Murphy, you lied. We found out that you guys destroyed all kinds of evidence. I don't, the chances of that happening are almost zero. But I don't really want to just say a specific date, when I don't really know if that's the date because, again, I don't really like to cut off a lot of people in general, but especially judges. So, it's okay with you, but I'd be, you're the policymakers, so I would need kind of your direction. It's okay if I just respond and say, as near as I can tell, we probably would have sent something forward about the same time we got the notice.
So you're our attorney and you're advising that legally you feel comfortable doing that?
I feel comfortable doing it because nobody's gonna get in any trouble for sure, right? Nobody's, nobody's lying about anything. Nobody's misrepresenting anything. The worst that can happen is, you know, they say, well, this doesn't count, you guys are out, and we lose, I don't know how much. I'm assuming, you know, a few thousand dollars a year over a certain amount of time. Money has to be used for certain things, right? It's not just going, it's kind of fun, it has to be used for substance abuse programs, which are important. I mean, you know, a few thousand dollars a year to use toward substance abuse programs is good, but, but I mean, the worst that can happen is they say, ah, Mitchell County, you're, you're not a part of this anymore. Nobody's gonna get in any trouble.
That's probably the best you can do, you know?
I think so.
If you put something, could you, because we have had one county attorney retire and another county attorney come in.
I will do that.
In between.
That's what I'm gonna do, just kind of specify, you know?
I don't want to get in any trouble either.
Yeah.
I think you put it together and,
Yeah.
if everybody else feels that way.
Oh, that's good.
Start there.
If you don't mind, maybe just, yeah, do a motion and a second. You know, don't be a resolution or anything, but maybe somebody could move. I'll, I'll say it, then somebody can say, I move it. So, I, I guess somebody could move that county attorney report, what he thinks is probably an approximate date that the county would have been instructed to preserve litigation, or to preserve evidence. If somebody wants to move that, make that motion, second that vote, then we're good.
Motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any other discussion?
We'll call Tom. Aye. Mark.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Sidney. Aye. Jim.
Motion pass.
Okay, thank. So I have, I said, it probably took a little longer, but when it comes to some of these things, it's complicated enough. I don't want to shortcut it because then I leave out something that I probably should have said, so, okay? Something.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff Puppi.
Morning.
Morning.
I don't have anything new this week. Over last week, I guess. So take any questions the board might have, or me, or any question. I know people here have wondered this one.
You gonna be around for the next panic system discussion?
Yes, I'll stay.
Good.
Yep.
Any questions?
Yes.
So are you aware of the pipeline meetings week?
I am.
Okay, and after that, they may be coming to ask to do surveys? And we've been told that we don't have to do the surveys, and that they won't be, we should to call the sheriff?
That's correct.
Okay, yes.
So the code says they may enter the land, doesn't say shall. And my position is that, well, the one I hope for the corporation, but they're gonna have to have a court order.
Right. I mean, and there's an Iowa law that is being referenced. I want to have a copy of it.
So, just so you're clear, I'm pro landlord, so if you don't want the pipeline, I'll do what I can to help you. If you want the pipeline, have a good day.
Well, I think it's just a matter of, you know, we have a lawyer that's telling us to contact the sheriff.
That's correct.
If we don't want to.
Deal with that.
I just want to make sure you were aware.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Department head discussion. Department head. Okay, county engineer update.
Couple of quick things. You guys might do this. Morgan Incorporated is doing some random crack sealing for us in the area. They're working on a little five. Do a couple of things around those stage here. We're not planning on doing a whole lot this year. We can probably look at more next year. We're hoping to get the salt shed erected. I know they had a blip in their schedule, but things didn't work out. Everything we'd have done by now, but I haven't had a most recent update, but we're ready for them whenever they show up. So, I'm guessing within the next week or two, we'll have that completed. One other thing, the DOT contacted, they're sending an email yesterday. In fiscal twenty-six, they plan on doing, they're in concept stage right now for doing a cold-in-place recycle on Highway nine from, I think it'd be the two eighteen, well, primrose intersection going east to Riceville. Typically, what we've done in the past is, they've always asked, they'll do a ten-foot fill it off of every intersection. In the past, we've kind of paved the fifty-foot just to kind of keep our equipment off the main highway when we're maintaining it. So, I informed them yesterday by email that we would be interested in having those intersections paved the extra fifty or extra forty feet that they would allow. There's eighteen intersections along that route, but they haven't given me kind of an estimated price, but at least we haven't agreed on anything yet. I just want to know what the prices are, what they think the cost might be, so we can evaluate it. But it's kind of a, a practice we've been doing for quite a while. I think we should probably continue to do it. Keep our equipment off the main highways, so that's what I intended them to do, so. We may see an agreement come through in the next, I don't know, they're, like I said, they're in concept, concept stage yet, but maybe in the next month or two, we'll see something come through. But I think it's a good idea to, to pave those intersections. So, that's all I've got for today. Next week, I'll be gone. I'm not sure if I'll be gone the whole week or not, but I will be available, at least for the board meetings. But I'll have my phone. Hopefully, it's not too spotty where I'm at.
Which broning quarry were we talking about?
Oh, it was the, you said it was close, so that's. Yeah, it's about,
it's about three miles off the line, I think it is. I can't remember what the, the Hoover Quarry, I think they call it.
In, in Howard County.
Howard County?
Right up. I think it's less than maybe three miles off, three or two miles off the county line. We were just up in that area doing that road grade. We were getting that, that seven hundred and fifty tons of rock, and we just continued to use out of that quarry. It was a closer call for us for that.
Decent road rock?
I think the, the, what we'd use it on was a regrade, so we kind of used it on the bottom a little bit. So we used it kind of more of a base than we did. We might have used some of it on the surface, but I think what we graded was a, we'll get it pounded in and then we'll start, we won't use it because it doesn't really mess with our road rocks. A speck on the surface, but we used some of the, I think we tried to use it. I don't know if they use any of the three-inch on it or not, but we tried to put down, you know, that little softer rock, but it's still, mine's pretty good. Actually, the actual, the drivers actually liked it. They think it worked well, but it's a little softer. But it worked for our purposes there, so. All right?
Thank you.
Update, the sole panels are up on the cement shop, waiting for a line to look.
Yeah, I looked at it yesterday. I thought there'd be more panels, but.
Pretty small.
It is. It is pretty small.
They want to do a energy green, but they don't want to take up the whole roof span. Well, only the size of a garage door.
Yeah, it's not very big.
Lot, lot of roof they could use.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all we produce, electricity lines, so.
We don't want to, we don't want to overproduce or get the credit for it either, so.
Thank you.
Discussion on possible action on Lynn Gordon's contract.
Hi.
Good morning.
Good morning. So I sent you guys the contract that was sent to me in an email. Hopefully, you guys had time to review that. I know that you guys approved being able to use our Council of Governments last week. I just need approval and a signature to be able to send this to them, so that way they can officially start. They've already started, but officially have us on contract that we're going to be using them. So, do you guys have any questions about it at all?
So we have a, any motion to move on with the contract? Your motion is our second.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Mark.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Sidney. Jim.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
I will scan this to them right now, and I will get it to them, so that way they can get moving. I've got a meeting with them tomorrow about, about everything that they have questioned regarding. So, we're gonna get started on the process.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Presentation for Mitchell County Historical Society.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for having us here. We, we so appreciate all the support that you give us every year. And I know the last time I was here was January, and we were just starting this whole process of building our museum. And since then, we have come a long ways, so we felt we wanted to update you on where we're at. I mean, pass these around. This is the west side of Cedar Valley Memories. This is the existing building. This is the addition. See it better, pass this around. We had a design committee that worked very hard and visited other museums and determined what we needed. And we felt that we just really couldn't skimp, or we, we just had to do what we had to do. And we're very happy with where we're at. Morton has started, I think this afternoon, their pouring cement. So it's coming along. The addition actually consists, it's about, all told, about close to seven five hundred square feet. The main museum display area is seventy-one by eighty-two, my bike. And then there is a large office work area and a vestable to come in. And then we have a large area that is for cataloguing and storage. And above that, we have it upstairs, that is additional storage. The existing office area that's already been out there, we are turning that into our genealogy library and a meeting area. So, we have started, we've got a fundraising committee that has started. Dennis Bragon is the head of that. They have started researching and writing grants and doing some fundraising. Anything you want to say, Dennis?
Oh, thanks.
Or Deb, or anybody here?
I, I just didn't realize I was the head of the fundraising committee. Yeah, we've been, we've been getting the word out, trying to let people know that we're going to need donations, and any sizes is helpful. And we have it set up so they can do that on the website or mail us. And everything we post, we're trying to get those addresses in there so people can do that. We were, we're lucky financially that we have about thirty percent of our construction costs covered already, which was very helpful. In talking to a friend of mine, banker, he said that that's good because if you go into this and you say, well, we have five hundred dollars and we want to raise two point two million, he said, that's not gonna fly very well with people, so we've got about a third. And that's, that's a good start on this, but we do need to, you know, come up with more. If any of you have a lot of money laying around, we'll take that. Know people that do, that would be great too. But basically, we're planning to do an opener kickoff sometime, probably through the summer here. Our goal is to have the museum finished by next, through the summer. And by next August, when we have our Cedar Valley Memories Stephen Power show, that'll be our grand opening because we figured there'll be quite a few people there to, to see that. So, we'll also have some more information organized by our annual meeting, which is the third weekend, third Sunday in November, I believe it is, nineteenth. And that'll be our program for the annual meeting, as well as talking more updates on what we've got here. So, that's really all I have to.
You said two point two million, is that the cost? Then is that what?
That's, yeah, that's what Morton has given us. That's the cost of construction. It, it isn't covering everything actually, because that office area that's on the other side of this that's existing, that, for the genealogy library, that's gonna need some work done on it too, to make it a little bit more library-like, I guess you could say, so there'll be some opportunity there for, for addition.
Any other questions?
Will your displays be somewhat always in the same place, or you have every place that you store them, then you bring stuff out, and you bring it back and do stuff out, or how's that work?
Well, we will start out with, there'll
Well, we will start out with, there are these certain displays that are really difficult to move. So those would most likely be in a permanent location. And lots of showcases that have things in them that would maybe always be there. Um, in the past, we've had special exhibits, um, that people, we have been very well received. We had the Spring Park exhibit and the newspaper exhibit and, uh, there's just been different things and so part of that, the center part of the big area is sort of devoted to, I mean, we're planning on those are going to be special exhibits or that change. So we've planned the lighting and so on and so forth to accommodate that. Yeah, we're, we're excited. Any other questions?
Do you do our floor heat?
Yes, we have floor heat and we also have supplementary furnaces. So we think the floor heat will be very nice, um, and efficient and clean. Because as you can imagine, there's a lot to keep clean in a museum, a lot of dusting, a lot of, so the floor heat is going to help tremendously. Anybody else have something to add? See, we've got a lot of supporters here today.
We do.
That's good. Okay, well.
Thank you.
I welcome you to, uh, drive out there and see where they're at, so. I'm going.
Thank you for your endeavor and do, do things to improve the communities.
We're really excited about it because as you know, Cedar Valley Memories has always had very rare steam engines and so on and so forth, but they've been difficult to showcase when there's nobody out there, you know, appointment only type of thing. And we feel that, um, possibly we're going to be able to get on bus trips scheduled. I mean, it's going to be a a place to go and we're also hoping to be able to, uh, we're planning on, uh, collaborating some with the conservation. And, um, you know, we're, we're dreaming, babe.
We also have that campground across, it's always very busy.
Yep.
Do we pop over from that?
Yeah, it's very busy out there with all the walkers and the horseback riders and the campground and, so.
The depot, what's, what, what about that?
Um, the depot is typically only open, so to speak, during the power shut. And we're hoping that, um, we can have it open more once we're out there. And a lot of that is, as you probably know, we have one part-time employee and the rest are volunteers, so it's you know, you can't have all these things open and nobody to watch over it, so it would require volunteer to be helping out there. Um, and then we could have it open or it could be open by appointment as well. We recently got another donation of, uh, some old, um, electric train set. We're hoping we can have a display set up that will actually run. Okay.
Very good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Alright, discussion of possible action on JCI proposal?
So we got a proposal for the, I'll just start it. We got a lot of different people involved with this, so everybody's going to have to kind of weigh in on stuff. So we have a proposal in regards to alert system and it shows that there's two components, or three, actually three components needed for the courts. Public health also is on this proposal. And we reached out to Laura, also reached out to Megan in regards to maybe what the services building would want. Sheriff indicated that had some dollars that could be used for the courts, correct?
That is correct.
And, uh, if the public, if the services building wants to be part of this, there will have to be money found and have to do that. I'm also speaking with Ryan, the labor is not part of this proposal and there is an aspect of it that we feel that we will need to have labor involved with it. Ryan is, sorry?
Yeah, um, part of it, we'll just need them to make the connection between the systems or the thing that's setting up the wireless and what panic buttons go to, but after that, um, we can handle the panic button installation and everything from that point forward.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll need to get a price from them for that that's not on here. He said that he would provide that. He didn't know if we needed that, so. That's something that's going to have to be figured out. I guess we need, we just need to know how many units, how many buttons the courts need, what the, uh, services, the services building taking is, there we go. Both of you, what you want and?
Right, well, I just wanted to, to, um, explain that their Michigan County Services Building does have a department within the county department fifty-five. So that consists of, you know, twenty-two thousand dollars is the budget for that each year, I mean, for this year. So, um, so with that, there is a line item for new equipment, um, which consists of three thousand dollars. So far, two hundred and seventy dollars have been spent, but I just didn't know if you were aware of that, that they have their own, they do have a department. So I didn't know if, if that would be something that we could use, um, those dollars for, for the, for the server for our building? Just because if, if our offices or any offices within that building ever, you know, leave the building, then, you know, the panic system is still there for others to, to use, so.
Did your, uh, you said you reached out to your IT and somebody else, what, did they get back to you on anything?
Yeah, just, um, so the other person was our CEO for, for, um, social services. I have not heard back from our, our IT department as of yet, but just wanted to bring to the forefront of, of the department fifty-five budget as well. Well, and the receivers, so they got buttons and we got buttons, that receiver, that thirty-nine hundred dollars, is that something that we only need one for the whole building?
For your building.
Yeah, so that's something that county social services and our department could split. We would both need a receiver.
Right.
No, correct, yes, correct.
That's what I wanted to make sure. That would work out for each of us then. So we have the receiver and then however many buttons. Okay. Yeah. And my other question that I had was just to, you've reached out to any of the other entities within the building. I mean, we, we, Ashley and I have two offices on our side of the building, but there are other entities within the building too, to see if they have interest in.
I did, I did not.
Okay.
Which, sorry, so which, what do you?
So there's crisis intervention, ship has an office there, uh, HHS over, uh, HHS, very rich.
I can't write that first.
I can get you a
Can you email me that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so they're occupied that building as well, so I just didn't know if, and there's some quite a large conference room. There's always been a panic button in that, in that area, it's used to share space. All of the entities, different entities use it from time to time, so just things to think about.
So we would need to know how many buttons the courts need and how many, how much you people need. Of course, those other ones, are they gonna, until we contact them, we don't know what they want? Alright.
So we can offer, sorry, we can offer them the computer version as well about the physical button, which would save them some money on the button if they're okay with using the computer the way everybody else kind of uses it in the courthouse, so that is an option as well.
And that's at no cost?
Correct. Well, I mean, no additional.
But it's not going to be a cost for you to come over and put that on?
No, not at all. Nope.
Or, or the button's portable, where you can just take?
Yes.
They are wireless.
Do our existing buttons right now, are they not operating? Do they not work?
They're not operating right now, no.
Okay.
I think we asked this question one other time, but if you do the computer, do you route, you have to sign in before you can use that?
No, it'll work even when the computer's signed out.
Okay.
Yeah, so even if it's on the screen before you put in your password and you hit those, it will go through.
Just to be right here in your computer, making a better
Yeah, that's
Right.
It's your call.
Um, what's the board think? I mean, I don't know if we can move today on anything.
I need more information.
Megan can give me those contacts, I'll email those people. Do you have the con, email contacts for that?
I do, I do for most, yes.
Okay.
Home call for her phone number or?
Maybe we get this narrowed down to what exactly we need and how we're gonna, how, who's gonna pay for it. We got the courts figured out to pay them, but this other avenue, we're gonna have to figure that out, somebody's got to figure that out. You can see people are needing, the three thousand dollars you're talking about, is that its county social services line item or is that the county's line item budget that you're talking about?
It's the county's line item, that's three thousand for the equipment for the county services building.
Okay. Alright.
So pay both on this thing?
If I could just add, so day would be a resource for the total number of butts we'll need on the second floor.
Okay.
And then, um, just so you're clear, room and board monies that we collect, obviously non-tax dollars can be spent for this, right, but I can't spend it for county social services building, code fiscal, all that. And then Rachel was wondering about a budget amendment and the timing of that, so that can occur because we don't know the total cost. We need today.
So we have to do another budget amendment?
Rachel, you address that.
They need to do a budget amendment conservation, which is later in here for some property that we're purchasing. So they will be getting some rates, so we can both side, but it makes sense to hold it all together. I mean, they, we can get with them today to get that. I've sent it by eleven AM tomorrow to the papers. EJ's easy to get into the press news, need it by eleven AM tomorrow. Their contact is absolutely terrible, so I'd prefer to have it to them by the end of the day today, except there's problems. I can still get ahold of them in the morning. But you're probably going to want to do a budget amendment because those items weren't in the budget. We do have that three thousand, like she said, for part of it. I don't think that line item should have to pay for all of it if it's only half the building. Um, then we can adjust the room and board based upon Dave's account for buttons. We can get that number today, but yeah, so. And I think we were scheduling that for October, what was that? October first would be the day we send it. The papers, um, the print in the it's like it would be printed in the seventeenth, eighteenth, which would give me your ten to twenty days.
Laura, how many, how many panic buttons would you need?
Well, um, to keep costs down, I would say, the problem is the nurses aren't always on the computers, um, when they're in there. So that's kind of why I was going the route of a panic button. Our clinic room in the very front definitely need an actual physical button because there is, there's not computers there and that's honestly the two places we want them the most. So for sure to, I would say. And then the rest, we could probably just put them on the computers.
Megan, what would you need?
Yeah, so I didn't know about the computer option, so with that, um, yeah, I don't, um, I would say like in, in the large conference room, but, I mean, there's a lot of different entities that use that. And I wonder about the small conference room, maybe even the small one. A lot of people coming in that just want help with applications and paper applications, we don't need a computer to do that.
So it's something that we, I mean, they don't have to be specific and always stay right there. I mean, they could, some of these could actually probably be mobile somewhat. Does that mental health provider need one? We never?
I mean, if the computer option is available, she might be able to do that.
She's only there?
She's only there on Thursdays. Mark?
Yes?
Um, my only concern is if they don't have for specific rooms as far as a deputy responding. Come in the door and he might even know where he needs to go. Right, she had that before, where?
Yeah, that is true, and they're, when they're mobile, they get moved around and not returned. So, yeah, I mean, if they're, if they can be assigned a specific, uh, desk, you know, clerk's office, judge's chamber, that's the best for us in terms of response time. Can that be done? I, could you clarify for me what you're talking about? So can you assign a button to a desk or a judge's chamber? Yeah, a location, sure, or a user.
Dawn had ours one time because hers was messed up a while ago and she had left it in her drawer or something and it was alerting. And they came to come to our small conference room and we were like, oh, it's not there, it's over in Dawn's office. And it was a false alert, but if, if it's not assigned to a specific place, per se, they don't know where to go.
Yeah, and the label system, it has to be labeled something.
Right.
That's just
But it makes sense, like, small conference room and if we're taking it from small conference room to a large conference room, they'll help provide our office. They're going to go to the small conference room when they should have gone to the large conference room, but they don't know.
And I'm just going to throw up seven for upstairs, that may be one or two, depending, you know, what Dave's count is, but
You can cover that. I mean, your, your fees, you can, you can pay for that, the courts.
Yeah, if I know, I mean, what the cost of seven is, yes, there is money for that.
I'm just trying to figure out that.
Can we split it between the, um, line item that's already there and then like the health improvement fund for the other half? I would have to, just the board of health to put that in a special meeting.
But then how's that interplay with the budget amendment? So we got a number of things kind of
Yeah.
Pointing here.
Do we need a button here? We used to have one.
Used to have one.
Sure, sure.
We got a grid here.
We're good.
I'm a, I'm a butt.
I mean, is that something, you know, you don't want to rush into it, do you, to figure this all out, to make sure we do it right? Can we do another budget amendment once we have it figured out or? You can, you're going to spend five hundred dollars between the two papers to print it in, which I don't know if that matters to you guys, but it adds up.
Can, can you wait with this budget amendment? Tell this is figured out?
You can wait a little while, but he, they need money to have the transaction go through.
When does he need to have the money, bud?
He said sooner rather than later. But, I think it'd be a week. I mean, we can push it back probably a week.
A week, we could wait a week. A week and everything would probably be figured out by then, right? Do we want to call him and ask him, or do you think we can wait a week?
Yeah, I mean, I have a message to him.
See if you can wait a week. Then Megan, you'd be able to maybe figure out what your CEO would have to say as far as what you have available for dollars?
Yes, yep.
Possibly, we, we have a three thousand dollar line item in the warehouse.
Yeah, we could, I could see if we could give you a special payment and get that through for the health improvement fund to cover.
The land acquisition with the historical society, correct? What's that? I say the land acquisition is with the historical society, but they're right here. Would a week delay matter?
We're actually, we've closed on it.
Closed on it?
The, um, no, it's the Iowa heritage, Iowa natural heritage foundation. Close to us.
Oh, okay.
So I think the conservation needs to get it from them.
Oh, from them? Okay. Any advice? We just want to back to this?
Yeah.
Begin.
We're, we're going to have to disable that anyways, and then when we go down to the budget amendment, then we'll discuss. Wait a week.
Perfect.
Okay.
Discussion of possible action on proposed service by solutions?
Okay, so last week when Rachel asked if we could look into this other company to get her Okay, so last week when Rachel asked if we could look into this other company to get her, year-end reopened with treasurer's office and others' office, I reached out to Solutions to see what was running up. So I reached out to Mike Barr and had a few email conversations with him and then called me as well. So Jim and I had some conversations with Aaron, Rachel, Shannon, and we come up with this. This S.
The top of that is what Shannon put together and then the bottom is just edited a little bit. Some things were taken out. And then Aaron has this also to see what people want to maybe put together.
Solutions are willing to open the year-end so we could work together to fix the issues. But they just wanted to be liable, not liable for. So they want a letter stating that they will not be liable for, embezzlement or ethical issues. As we talked to Rachel and Shannon, they were in preance to go forward with this so we can get things moving.
Then we have the green of the solutions to service from them for this.
What happened was that there was an issue with a couple line items at the end of June and then, and you two can explain this a lot better.
I can explain, yeah. In October, we got tier one, tier two. Anytime there's a change in law or anything, there is programming issues. I don't jump on and do stuff right away because I don't wanna be the beta virgin tester because a lot of times it doesn't work the first time. So I let it, the counties do it, thought it was figured out. So I received tier one, tier two in October, it wasn't right. The numbers were all wrong. So at that time, the treasurer's support person, Ashley, backed it all out. And I said, fine, we'll work on it in November. We did it in November, everything went through fine, as far as we knew. Then we did, we got our second half in March, everything went fine as far as we knew. In May, Rachel and I were discussing TIF for City of St. Ansar. And it's kinda hard to figure out what they're gonna get. So I said, well, let me look at their fund balance because we close every, at every month, end of every month on the 14th. Whatever we collected for the cities, colleges, schools, everything gets sent to them in treasurer's orders. And when it's in May, when I look to see, I said, well, then we'll know what they're gonna get in June. Their St. Ansar City fund balance was minus $17,000. That's wrong, that can't be right. So I contacted Solutions, we went through it, and when Ashley backed out all those entries in October, she backed out on, on our side, so our balancing looked fine. But treasurer's orders were sent those amounts to all those entities. So then Allison, the programmer, figured out how to fix it to do negative treasurer orders, so we balanced at the end of the year correctly. Thought everything was fine. Then we did year-end, we closed out year-end, Rachel and I were both done. There's another report that Rachel runs for end of year.
For cash balancing.
Cash balancing. And lo and behold, there was county general fund, general supplemental, general basic, and the assessors money that was put in in error in October, thought it was fixed, that didn't get fixed. We didn't catch it in May because it wasn't a treasurer's order. So the way we, and then talking to Solutions down in Des Moines during ISAC, the Band-Aid that Alice and I did to fix the treasurer's orders can't be done because there's no treasurer's orders that exist for county funds. Because we don't send money out to anyone. And so they've gotta help us figure out how to fix it, what do we have to do? Because as far as we're concerned, we're balancing fine. It's the cash balancing that's off. So that's something that is not worked with monthly, it's just year-end. So they've got to give us guidance on how to fix it. I know it's something on my side, we may have to do more fixes because of the Band-Aid we did in May for the treasurer's orders. And we know that Rachel possibly will have to do something as well. We know it's there, we just don't know how to fix it. Because we thought it was, I thought it was fixed back in October, but we found out it wasn't in May. We fixed the treasurer's orders and didn't even think it was gonna affect, that it could affect these other ones. So Solutions is gonna have to give us some kinda guidance because it's on the side we can't even see or do. And they need to tell us how to fix it, where to fix it. Because we can't go forward. We are going forward and we might have to redo stuff that we've already done because month-end balancing has already been done for July and August. And I don't know, it, it shouldn't affect it, but I, we don't know for sure, do you Rachel? I mean, once that starts getting fixed. I think once we open year-end, we'll have to go through and redo, you'll have to do your June month-end, quarter-end, year-end cash balancing. Then you're gonna have to go through and start, you're gonna have to do July month-end, August month-end, probably pretty soon, September month-end. It shouldn't change anything, but we'll have to rerun the reports. The numbers shouldn't change. But we will have to go through the process of month-end to get it, the computer back up. So that we don't have another problem at the end of this fiscal year. So we do need Solutions guidance on how to do it.
So they, in conversations with Mike Barr, they are, they, they know how to do this and they are willing to do this, but the reason they want this, this, disclosure is the right word, is that, yeah, this, their lawyers, naturally, this is what lawyers think, that's why they are lawyers. They're nervous that there could be a, a bad apple in the group, and there are not, but they're lawyers.
Right.
And they're nervous that a bad apple, you open year-end, you make changes. Somebody could do something to embezzle money and then you close things back up again. You've changed things, there's no record because it's closed, you don't know what got changed, so they're nervous about that. Mike Barr also said that that's kind of a stretch. Now, they're lawyers, no offense, that's just the way it is. And if, if somebody was going to be eventually money, they would've been doing it for the last number of months or years, rather than all of a sudden this trigger point that, oh, I have a great opportunity. So it's kind of a stretch that it would happen. I know it will happen, but.
And we know what happened. We can trace it back to October. We know what happened. We can not fully take it out on both of our sides, but I don't think Rachel and I, it's not big enough, never make it work well.
Is that, is it that $17,000? Is that what we have to?
Uh, no, it's more than that. The $17,000 was just the trigger, the City of St. Ansar was negative in their fund that much and that's not right. So that's how we first figured out in May and corrected all the, like NIAC and St. Ansar and City of Osage. Everyone got reports that live funds, what we were supposed to give you was, the report says we're supposed to give you $20,000. We only gave you $3,000, City of St. Ansar, because you owed us $17,000. And they could go back to their October report and see that they got $17,000 and their November report that they got $17,000 and their March report that they got $17,000. And it's two payments a year, so they, it clearly shows in the treasurer's report, they got an extra payment that they shouldn't have. So that all tracks correctly. The only thing is, is that there's no treasurer reports for the general basic fund or anything because it just goes in it. So what we fixed was the stuff we could see because we don't wanna do cash balancing. So when she did the cash balancing report, then the money that went into the extra half-year's payment of general basic, general supplemental, assessors, that's sitting there. And we can bring that right back to our report, that's the, the numbers. There's no question that is what the problem is. So there's no concerns as far as anything done wrong. The numbers match, we know where it is, we just don't know how it is. If that all makes sense? Treasure orders is easy, we could track it and it was very clear what happened.
So we had agreed to do this, can this, can you start on this right away or Solutions? Well, they should.
I haven't talked to Solutions directly since ISAC, so. I emailed them yesterday to ask kinda what's on the sheet. I said that we understand that both sides need to be open, both the treasurer and auditor. Neither the treasurer or auditor know exactly how to fix the issue and we're expecting guidance and support to complete this process once the year, once the year-end is open. We prefer written directions with the needs, with what needs to be fixed, where the program, or which program to fix it and who, which department needs to do it. Our county attorney is preparing a letter for clarification. We will hold you harmless, any issues, basically what they had said in there, hold you harmless, but we would still expect your accountability for software calculation issues that may appear, occur in audit process outside of this specific event. Mike Barr was supposed to call me last week, he said they called me. They haven't responded to an email. So I'm frustrated, I mean, everyone, I think it's frustrating, but they'll talk to you guys, they have yet to talk to the people that actually have the problem. So I don't know, I don't have the answer, I don't know where to go. I did check with the secretary, with the auditor, the state auditor, and they're okay with opening up. Just make sure, keep any documentation from before and after, so.
Well, we're here to try to help make.
I know. It's frustrating, they tell, they tell you guys are gonna call, they don't call. That was Thursday.
Yeah.
It's frustrating.
And unfortunately, Rachel's office is the one that has a report that didn't balance. It's not Rachel's office's issue, it's, we know it's both of our issues. Anything, I need you to help, I wanna do it because I know, I thought Ashley fixed it and we can go through it next.
Aaron, the, the, the document that sent you, and it's been said that you're going to prepare a letter, so do you want something different than what's at the bottom of that document or?
I'm not a tech guy, I always say sometimes, you know, I mean, I might misunderstand things drastically because I'm not a tech guy. What I would want, and so, I mean, I kinda, so sometimes it's hard for me to even get my head around what the problem is because I'm not really a tech guy, so I'm gonna shorten this up and say, the only thing I, what I would say to Solutions is, okay, and I, I think what that language does says it. And the reason I say I think is because I understand the technology. What I would basically wanna say to Solutions is, I understand that you don't wanna be held liable if something goes wrong during this process and somebody steals money or something. I, 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 I get that, Solutions, I wouldn't wanna be either because there's not gonna be much documentation or records. So I, we, we will agree with you on that, Solutions. But we don't wanna release you from any other mistakes you may or may have made. I mean, I don't understand how all this works, so the problem, I mean, I'm not suggesting anything here because I don't know, but the existence of the problem, I mean, did Solutions have something to do with it being a problem?
Yes, yes. So they didn't have the work.
So you don't, in my opinion, you don't wanna say, hey, Solutions, fix it and we'll forget about all your other screw-ups.
And there's.
I'm not, I shouldn't say that publicly, I'm not saying they screwed up. I'm just, I'm saying in a, in a general sense, if I'm dealing with anybody, any, anybody in the world and they screw something up and they come to me and say, I'll, I'll do this, but we forget about everything else I messed up. Maybe, but maybe not, right? I mean, sometimes it's good to just move on, make amends and move on, but sometimes you're like, yeah, let me think about this twice. So, so that's what I would. Am I right, am I on the right track, Rachel?
Because there has been other things this year with legislative changes. We, it hasn't been a cupcake lock with Solutions. I'm just gonna say that makes sense.
I mean, you just don't want to, you don't wanna just automatically, you wanna make sure that you're not releasing them from other stuff they may have done wrong, which I'm not suggesting they have. But I think you get what I'm saying.
Kind of, kind of not, so you know, and I agree with your statement, but so what are you proposing? I mean, you can make, you can put that in there, but are you talking that, are you just more or less making a statement that this is somewhat, I want, I'm just gonna say that this is somewhat your prop, Solutions, this is somewhat your problem and you, you need to, you need to be responsible in order to help us through this repair or whatever. Are you just making a statement or are you saying that financially they need to do something about this or?
I, I don't know, I don't, I mean, like I said, I'm not involved enough in the process to know. If, if, if this is lawyer speak, right? I'm paranoid like all lawyers are. Jerry Wolfers told me once, just because you're paranoid doesn't mean they're not out to get you. So that's what I kinda live by. I don't know if the Solutions made any mistake at all, but you know, I'm just saying, if somebody comes up to me and says, hey, I'll do something for you, you need to forget about anything I messed up. My interest is gonna go up, I'm gonna say, well, I really wasn't aware, but I'm a little curious now. So what I would maybe say is something along the line, I'm paraphrasing here. You know, hold them harmless for any issues of opening year-end in regard to any blah, blah, blah. I'm reading some language, but.
That's how I kinda put that in. We're not giving them a car launch, anything that went wrong, just if, if, if something or something happens, we understand. You're not liable, but everything else in that fair got to be liable.
Yeah, but we'll expect your accountability for software calculation, calculation issues that may occur in the audit process outside of this specific event. And maybe I would add something at the end that says, or any other liability or accountability issues, just something like that. You, you, you know, I mean, I don't wanna nitpick and I don't wanna get in the way of Solution being had, right? And I don't wanna get in the middle of Solutions saying, but we're not gonna help you fix the problem unless you do, right? You don't wanna get in that situation, but.
Your concerns are my concerns as well. But we've had a rough year and I didn't wanna say, yeah, you're not in response, we, we hold you harmless. And then some of them that happened in August, September, December, now they're saying, oh, we got this letter.
So I think the draft of that language is good, I might just add at the end, or any other, and, and sometimes when you put the word liability in, that can get people, right? That can get people's radar up and make things contentious. So I might say, uh, we'll expect your accountability for software calculation issues that may occur in the audit process outside of this specific event, or other accountability issues.
Or any other accountability issues.
I would probably stay away from using the word liability much because we're all human and once somebody starts throwing that word in our face, we start, everybody gets a little standoffish, seemingly.
But if we go back to my question, we paid them a lot of money for services that we're not getting. So wouldn't there be some repercussion on that?
They've had HR issues and I, I think they'll go back and say that they've lost staff and it's expected growing pains type thing.
Yeah, we gave them money, we didn't, we don't care what staff they have, we bought the service. And we're not getting it, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, like I said, I'm not familiar enough with the whole situation to say whether somebody messed up or not, but.
You gotta.
Like the question you're asking seems to be a very reasonable question.
You gotta walk a fine line because otherwise our problems will get thrown down the bottom of the bottle.
That's just it.
But the other counties, other counties gotta have the same problem, don't they?
Oh, yeah, the state auditor's office has, has been contacted by multiple counties and they are aware on their radar that there's Tyler and there's Solutions and then there's counties that have their own programming. That's all for counties, IT, software and the state, as far as I know.
That's correct.
Right?
That's right, that's all the software.
So they know that the majority of us have Solutions. In our opinion, what I've been told, Tyler is not as good as Solutions. But Solutions has lost a lot of personnel and have a lot of issues right now and the state is aware of that. They, they are at the table. Treasurer's group has a Solutions Committee that is meeting with Solutions monthly to talk about issues. I don't know if the auditors group is doing the same. And the state is also aware of it and they know what's going on. They know it's, if that wasn't right, there's counties that just got their tax statements out a week ago. And if they wouldn't have done that, if it would've been after September 1st, they have to give everyone an extra month for collections and it's nightmare. And it was directly back to programming issue.
We get an email within a year that somebody took Solutions over and they were gonna continue on being Solutions, but I've also got emails that they're, they're having a turnover of employees and I know that Mark said it's not our problem, but it is kinda because it's people on their end that are messing our end up. And so I wondered about that email a year ago when we got that about Solutions being taken over and what happened.
I guess, I guess I'll just use an example. So if I take my truck in to get it fixed and they work on it and it's, uh, what they work on, they put parts on and things don't work. So I take it back and say, what you did does not work. So, I take it back and say, what you did does not work. It needs to be fixed. Okay, bring it in. We'll fix it. No cost. We did something wrong. We'll fix it. Do it again. Do they do the same thing? The other side of that is that, okay, take my truck in, they do something, they mess it up. I go back to them and say, I'm gonna sue you because you, you worked on my truck and you messed it up. Now, are they going to help me out? No, they're not gonna help me out. We've crossed the line. So, as long as they're willing to help us at this point, I'm a little nervous about getting aggressive with them. Now, if it comes to the point where they say, sorry, we can't do anything to help you, you're on your own, well, then we've got a big problem. We have to do something. But I would rather kind of walk this point that they're willing to help us. Try to get it resolved.
Let's get the, try to get the issue fixed and then I'm very glad. And if this triggers us to look at other directions, that would be after this event discussion.
One thing I would, this is more a long line when I was talking earlier about liability. Is one, one thing, you know, I should say, like I said, I don't understand. Sometimes things go wrong. And it's not anybody's fault. Sometimes things just go wrong, you know, like every, I'm not a medical malpractice attorney at all, but sometimes I use the example where somebody might say, well, this doctor screwed up. I need, I need compensation. Sometimes it's like, no, nobody really screwed up. It just happened, you know? It just, it just happened. The surgery didn't go well. Your dad died on the operating table. It's horrible, but nobody messed anything up. It just happened. And sometimes things do just happen. And so, by my comments earlier, I'm not suggesting that anybody ought to necessarily look to go after something. I don't know, because I'll be the first to say, sometimes things just happen. And it's just one of those things. People never like that explanation, but sometimes it's true. Sometimes it's just, you know, it just happened, right? It just happened. So, I'm saying that more because if Solutions out there listening, I don't want them saying, perfect, you said we screwed everything up. No, I did. And I didn't mean to apply that. So, that's my true motivation for saying this.
But they know they got it wrong. So, they try to fix it somehow.
Well, I think that's what's kind of trying to happen here. What are you proposing?
I don't know.
They said they can't open it unless we have this. So, let's, I feel like we should just do it, get it open and figure it out.
There's no choice then. They gotta, they're all just.
To get it open, that's, this is what we have to do. Yeah. And if they fix it on the background, there definitely is no record. If we fix it on our side, we're gonna do screenshots. We're gonna track everything for the auditor so that there is no question of what we did. It's not just changing the record on the backside and changing the numbers. We are gonna go step by step with their checklist. At least I am. Every step they tell me to do, I'm gonna take a screenshot of what I did. Exactly. Because I, the auditor really appreciates it because if he can say, well, I can't remember what I did. It was three months ago. He can say, this is the stuff, this is the stuff. And Rachel, you reached out to our audit company, right? Yep. So, they're aware of it. The state auditor is aware of it. These two are willing to work through it. I think we should just try it and can't get it, then we'll have to go into different options. But right now, this is what we got.
So, if we do this, do they give you a timeline on when that would be completed?
It's, it's not that they're completing it. How long is it gonna take both of them to complete it? It's on our timeline. It's not their timeline. They're gonna open it up and advise them how to do it.
Okay. Well, that's it. It's combination.
So, the longer we stew and figure different solutions out, it's another two weeks. And then Rachel, she's got election coming. I mean, we don't need to be pushing all this into November where she is completely swamped. And so, the more we can get this going faster, the better.
Saying that, I'll make a motion to revoke services by Solutions.
A motion is our second.
Back to you.
Any other discussion?
Roll call. Todd.
Hi.
Jim.
Hi.
Cindy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi. Discussion of possible action on payment on Kepart property. Apparently we're done with it. It's good.
Matt's here.
Yeah, I just completed. Everything's off with it. There's some fun, or little facts. I took in 465,000 pounds of metal, 235,000 pounds of landfill. I mean, there was over 1,000 tires, over 100 TVs, over 60, 60 vacuums that no one even would have thought because you couldn't get into a building, you couldn't get into a lean-to, you couldn't get around the corner to see it. There was three buses, five vehicles, a box truck. That, it's, it's all been taken off. Took several loads of concrete off. I brought in five loads of dirt for fill. Two loads of, two bigger bales of mulch, straw. And I just wanted to take this time to thank Mike Meyer, Mayor, for the guidance and helping with the bid. And I hope that all board members are satisfied at the job I did. So, that's all I had to say. Thank you, Mike Meyer, for helping me with the guidance and getting the bid. I appreciate it.
I think you did a good job by recycling all the metal you could.
That's a lot of manly labor.
Manly labor.
I seen me and three guys, well, better than not going to the landfill.
Is there a recommendation from a board member to pay this?
I would recommend paying this.
A motion is our second. I'll second that. Any other discussion?
And I, he didn't say, but I went out there last Tuesday. I think we had a little rain and he went back out and did another magnet run over it. Because the ground did settle a little bit. And that was good night of him to go out and magnet again.
I actually got three more wheelbarrows of concrete and boards, but I don't think if you went three foot, foot down, I don't think you're gonna get it all. I mean, he's been there for how many years doing the same stuff? I got five more buckets of, I actually did it by hand. I went five more buckets of metal off the ground that I could pick up, the matic could pick up. I leveled it, I leveled it to the land, there's a word for it, but to the way it was. Because it slopes and Jessica's house is only, when I probed it or whatever, it's only like, I don't remember the exact measurement, but if you would put any more fill in there, she'd need water in her basement and she wouldn't want that. So, I had to leave it the lay of the land to, because it goes up high by the cemetery, comes down, and it comes, at first there was two puddles that like stood and watered, but there wasn't none after you guys come back. There was no standing water. It runs, I got it to run, supposed to run to the, to the road, and then there's tile on the road. This is what the neighbors sickly to me. So, that's why I tried keeping that. I tried keeping that the way it was. So, it's, it's not leveled this way, but it's leveled not like this. I don't know how to find that.
Yeah, whatever lay of the land is.
Yeah, yeah. So, yep.
All right. Roll call. Cindy.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Todd.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Jim.
Hi.
What's your passives? Very good. Good job.
Are we even have that discussion of when we're gonna put it on or open bids or live auction? I have brought Terry here today to discuss some stuff, but I just.
We'd have to be on another time.
It'd be public comments.
Public comments.
Yeah.
You bet.
There's code requirements of how we sell it.
Yep.
Approved Treasury's monthly report for August.
First off, I'd like to say, to piggyback on the Solutions, state of Iowa had issues this month with their reporting system. So, when I went to balance, to balance the county records to the state records, they ran a report in advance. So, we had misinformation reported of revenues for driver's license. So, every county had to do adjusted journal entries in the state system to correct it. So, every system is not perfect. It was not a fun, well, it usually takes an hour or two, took approximately 10 hours this month. So, every state system has their issues in computers. Once you run something, it does not go away always. So, this month for August 25 for report, motor vehicle paid to the state was 201,475.22. Of that, general basis, county got $9,373.68. Reimbursed $803 for postage. And that covers the postage to mail out the renewal notices. And if people mail back in their renewal notices, then we have to send out their stickers or their new plates. 515, 1,519 was driver's license fees. I think that's right. We did 217 driver's license issued. Of the 217, seven of them were not county residents, so they paid the $10 convenience fee. Organ donations will be collected on behalf of the state. We reimburse them $197. New registration for the month of August is $151,544.66. Of that, Mitchell County got $226.15. Remember, January 1st is when the law changes and those numbers will go up considerably.
Good.
So, the money's retained by Mitchell County. Total fees collected was 265, 208.71. Of that, we retained 11, 991, 83. We just, general expectations or forecast is that, that number should triple in January. So. Property taxes we collected already in August was $4,142,628.85. 85 cents is some people pay thirds, some people pay halves, some people pay quarters. So, we get a lot of people that are like 33 cents and then the odd man out every year paying the extra penny. So, that's why it's the cents because everything gets rounded. Special assessments we collected, $10,129.95. A lot of that is the city of Osage's street assessments because those will become uncollectible. Last year, they certified it, so they think they're collectible this September. So, there's a lot of that. Some people are coming off paying in full. We get $5 for every special assessment payment that we receive for on behalf of another entity. If it's a drainage or something, we don't charge you $5 collection because it is our bill that we're setting up. But once the cities, they have to send a letter of notice, give people 30 days to pay something. And then if they don't pay it, then they can certify it with us for collections and it gets attached to the property and we'll go with tax help if they don't pay it. So, we get $5 per payment to offset for our time. So. And I do encourage people, if they can, can pay more payments, they can before December, pay extra payments because they're paying 9% interest on special assessments by code. So, if they could pay a couple of extra payments. So, I said, I added last year and this year a little note in there saying, just explaining it so they understand, you know, yeah, your payment is $300, but maybe the principal is 130. So, you're paying, you know, look at your report. If you can swing an extra principal payment, it's in your best interest. I'm not an accountant. I'm not an attorney, but I just like to give them a heads up. Because some people, when they come in and you tell them that, they're just like, what? And you're like, well, you can pay extra and pay it down faster. So, we get $5 for every one of those we collect. Tax sales certificates redeemed, we had eight this month for $8,718. Prepaid taxes was $4. That's when some people figure out their halves of their quarters wrong and we get a little bit of extra money. We just put it towards next year's because that person actually paid the full year. Their September and March, and they were $4 long. So, then we put $4 towards next year's payment because we couldn't put it to the second half. Interest on investments was $76,680.56. I did have three CDs that I rolled over. And we are still getting good interest. I had some issuance. I know that the Fed's supposed to be reducing. We had one bank that reconsidered and actually we got 5% interest for six months or 12 months, which looking at the forecast, that's, that's gonna be hopefully positive for us in the future. Miss Lane's received processed from other county departments was 60 and for $2,461,260. So, the total revenues we processed this month was $7,076,570. Any questions?
Yeah, a motion to prove that. Treasury's report come in. A motion is our second.
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
Roll call. Jim.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Todd.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Cindy.
Hi.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approved Treasury's monthly report for August. Now, it really looks like we have $7,793.52. Page of county attorney. A motion to prove that.
I'll move.
A motion is our second.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion?
Roll call. Jim.
Hi.
Cindy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi. Discussion of possible action on HVAC project and potential rebate?
Okay, um, so the project is, is the date that has been picked as far as project closeout is September 30th. What's happening with the system is basically it's operating, there's things that are being fine tuned within the controls to adjust set points and different things, but fine tuning is happening there. With the closeouts, basically paperwork and we receive all the as-built drawings and lots of paperwork. A lot of that's, it's gonna be printed, but it's also gonna be digitized, so we'll have a digital copy of it. There's, I have it on here, paper request 25, and that's basically for the retainage, $84,000 and some odd change. I can't remember the exact number, but around $84,000 of retainage it's left. As far as the contract, I need to look at that again, but if I remember right, it's at, it's the date of the project closeout. We have 31 days to pay that retainage. So, I don't have it in front of you today in order to approve it. I think I might. All right, I need to look at that contract. I was thinking maybe next week, but I don't think we can do that either. But anyway, that's, that's the retainage. As far as the engineering consultant, with the claims that we approved today, there's two claims in there for the consultant, which those services should be paid at 100, we should be square with them, 100%. We shouldn't be owed any more money. I think that's kind of it on the project. So, I emailed you guys this. This is, so Vic is the guy that, let me give one to Aaron too. Vic is the guy that Midwest Engineering is working with to close this project out. He's very experienced in it.
Highlighted.
Oh, yeah. So, on here is what email that he had sent me. And I highlighted key parts of it. Basically, what it is, is that there's a school that's West Union Elementary, they did an HVAC project. Their project was amounted to about $4 million. Ours is about $1.7 million. And what the Inflation Reduction Act, I don't know why it's titled that, but it's a federal program. If you build a green project, meaning stuff that's not gas related, you can get money back for that. And what, and it's basically, I think, 30% of what the project cost is. What has to happen is you, it goes through the IRS, you get a project number from the IRS. And then there is an attorney on the East Coast that helped this school district to do this. They, he goes through as far as all the, what you need to do as far as filling out the, I don't want to call it a tax return, but you fill out that, he fills that document out, helps us. Vic also coordinates what he's doing with Casper Plumbing. So, for example, we have two boilers in this system. Those would be taken out of the, of the items that are qualified for this green energy rebate because they use gas. Long story short, we could probably get approximately, what is it? Rough numbers, we get $491,000 back out of this, this, if we were to go this route to do this. Now, I'm just putting to the board because I'm not gonna work on this if you don't want to do it. I'm not gonna waste my time, but if you, if this is something that interests you, we can pursue this.
I have a question. Does it matter? The federal dollars have already paid for this system, but I don't know that. You know, that would be a good, you know, is it still eligible based on that? That would be a question. That would be a question for the attorney. I mean, you know, you start and then all of a sudden it's... That would be questionable.
Turn around. The government gives you money, and then they're going to give you more money back for a rebate.
For a rebate on what they've already paid for. That's, you know...
They've done stranger things.
Yeah, well, yeah, stranger things have happened.
Yeah, I don't have the answer. I don't know.
Yeah, if we could find that out, then yeah, I'd, right? I mean, why not? But, you know, if that's a dis, if that's a disqualifying factor, it's the only thing I can think of, you know? As far as the green energy, yeah, it's, it's green, it's, you know.
See, I can ask that question.
Yeah.
I don't have the answer, but I can certainly ask that question.
If you'd ask that question, then I need to proceed. It is my opinion. I don't...
Did the school say how much the lawyer got for doing his part, or?
I believe that, I believe lawyer got $14,000 to do the, his services. And Vic gets half of that, so you're looking at around 20 grand for that, that school to do that. But then the school got, what did they have? They got more. No, the school got a lot more. They had a bigger project. They also had more boiler type stuff in there. I don't remember what school got it.
It's, uh...
But they, you know, so I mean, let's just say it costs us $20,000 to do this, and we get $491,000 back.
Correct.
That's, that's worth the 20 grand.
Yes.
To do it. And that's not a guarantee it's $491. Some of that might get trimmed out even more, but...
Yeah. It's still sizable, huh?
Mm-hmm. I'll ask that question.
Yeah.
See if I can find the answer.
That's the only thing I thought of that might be a glitch, you know, or deal breaker.
I'll ask that question.
Come back next week?
Sure. Yeah. Thank you.
Yep.
All righty. Set a public hearing for budget amendment October 1st at 9:00 AM.
Mike responded, he said the 8th is fine.
Okay, great.
So wait a week after the...
So we can do it October 8th at 9:00 AM.
October 8th at 9:00 AM. You have a motion for that? Is there a second?
Next second.
We'll see. Any other discussion?
Roquel, Mike.
Hi.
Sidney.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Jim.
Hi.
Todd.
Hi.
Motion passes. Approved compensation board resolution 1233-24.
So there's two of them there. The differences are, the one list, the terms to be for the same years that the elected officials are. So the four years for this year would be one board supervisor, you have one board supervisor as county auditor and county sheriff. And then a two-year term for treasurer, recorder, and attorney, and one other board supervisor. And then the other one, I have names here for the elected official that you can pull out for the four years and for the two years. If you go with the elected officials' terms, that will still have to draw for the two supervisors to set their term, because it has one on each of them.
Any? Second one?
I don't, I guess I don't care. The, I do like the resolution that has the, be it further resolved where it specifies the county and kind of lists that out. But I like that format a little bit. Which one is that, Rachel, when you list out the particular?
Well, so...
County attorney, county auditor, counties, but which one is that one?
Yep. Well, there's one that has like blanks on it. So that one we would write in, if you chose to draw the last for them, then we would write in if it's like, you might end up two board supervisors on one of the same terms and whoever. But we can add, I can write it in there who gets drawn. And then the other one just has it listed out as county auditor, county sheriff, and one representative of the board supervisors would do four terms. And then the other, for the initial two terms, where it would then be four terms af, four-year terms after that would be the county attorney, county treasurer, county recorder, and one representative.
I think the second one would be fine.
Which one's that?
The one you just read, the last, read one first, the second, the one where it lists...
Without the lines?
Without the lines. So that'd be number two, is that right? That's without, no.
I didn't write down which one was number two, but yeah.
That's what it was on there, when you listed our agenda.
Mm-hmm.
Good, but it either will work. I'm good with these ones.
Have a motion now?
I'll make a motion for that. 1243-24, would further be resolved, representative of the county, the one without the lines, cut it short.
Good. Motion is there? Second.
Second.
Motion. Any other discussion?
And then after this, I'll have you guys draw for which rep is three years, that is two years and four years.
Good.
Roquel, Todd.
Hi.
Jim.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Sidney.
Bye.
Mike.
Hi.
You will be getting a hold of all the, have all the elected officials found somebody?
Yep.
Okay. And then you will be getting a hold of people, the...
Yep, so I got all the contact information for the new ones, and then I'll mail out. It's usually middle of November for the meeting, right, and December then.
You have the contact information for ours, too, then?
Yes, yep, yep. Who wants to draw?
Chair.
The chair, good. Okay, so is this for the two-year or four-year?
He told me.
It's the first one on the sheet.
I have a statement.
With four-ish. And others, my counter, will be the two-year.
Very good.
Four is just four?
Yep.
And there's two, okay.
Items of note, meetings attended?
The Osage City Council meeting last Tuesday night. Key things that they went through were, the fire department in regards to the control burn that would be happening at the fairgrounds. Some of that will be, are replaced and will be torched. And had a good resolution for temporary closure of some streets in Iowa in regards to Autumn Artistry. The DOT allowed closure of main streets, the way I understand, which is kind of a big surprise, but it's going to happen. And then they talked about their article funds as far as some different funding for that. Had a NICOG executive meeting and then the full board meeting last night. I think the main thing to talk about is the annual report presentation that she went through and some of the key items about it. In this last year, they did 104 single-family home rehabs. Year-to-date, I mean, as far as total homes that they've done with that program are 1,104 homes where they've done home improvements to them. The big thing is they can't find contractors. They've, and there's grant money available for it, but they don't apply for as much grant money as, because there's not enough contractors to do the work in the NICOG region. Last year's $2 million in grants. They've, when they started the program, they had $24 million in grants to date. They have a program where they provide ramps for people's houses in regards to people that need to have a ramp to get in another house. And then it can be moved to another house whenever that time happens. Again, they need more contractors throughout the whole region, and they're trying to do things in order to get more contractors. They're trying to incentivize by having a stipend for the first project that the contractor does. There is a Hispanic individual in the Mason City area that actually got a loan through NICOG to bring more family members from Mexico to, this isn't a bad thing, so I don't want to make it sound like it is, from Mexico to Mason City in order to expand his construction business, to do these rehab programs to these houses, to improve them. Other things that NICOG's looking at, because we don't have enough contractors to do this work, is they're going to recruit some from Des Moines, where there'll be, these contractors from Des Moines will come up, and they'll have maybe four or five projects that they could be up here, work on, and then go back down, and also bring some in from Wisconsin. And they also are going through Charles City, NIAC, in regards to the trades in order to try to get young people in this business. It's just, it's just kind of sad that, and it's not the contractor's fault, but it's just kind of sad that we have a need for all of this stuff to be done. There's money available to do it, but you know people to do the work. And it's just, anyway, that's what I have.
I have all my meetings this week, so I'll send you last week.
Oh, I went to the St. St. Care Open House, invited two, and seen the new building. It was pretty impressive. Looks really good. Glad Mitchell County's a part of that. And I went to the county social service meeting, too. There was a presentation from United Way of North Central Iowa. September is suicide prevention month, and I think September counts as Suicide Prevention Day, which is tomorrow, so. Anyway, that's kind of the highlights.
I went to the county social services also, and Christine Anderson is a mental health prescriber, so she can go there one day a week.
I attended the community collaboration meeting. The United Way presented, like Mike said. And I also had a busy week last week. Fair board on Wednesday. Evening, we went down and prepped the show arena to move it before the fire department burns the other barns. It was too good, and we needed to keep that one. So we put it on a semi-trailer and I-beams and bridge iron on the side, and it was quite a project. And then Sunday, we went down and, and moved it. And it's in its new home. Unbelievable. There's videos out there if anybody wants to see it. It's, it was quite the move. And I'm not real sure who did the measuring, but it was spot-on.
Well, I'm going to have to...
There's a lot of poles and it was, and those guys, there were skid loaders and backhoes and semi, semi-trailer. And it was, if you see the video on social media, take a look at it. It's pretty awesome. And then I had a fair board meeting last night. Here we go again, right back at it. They actually have two contracts from the, I think it was the Stone Age, and then one other one. It's the kids', it's a kids' thing, but they, they sent a contract already they want to sign. They want to come back, and this will be their third or fourth year, so it's... The rodeo's coming back. They're going to do, add on some things, I guess. There'll be the state fair convention coming up in December. And that's where hopefully the, who goes, representatives will talk with the carnival people and get that lined up, so. Got some groundwork to do, add a few more camping sites. And then of course, the building that's going up, that's after Autumn Artistry will be here, so. The fire department will be burning it down. Not sure the date on that, so. And that was it.
Very good. Public comment? Public comment?
Hi, one I should have brought up in Department Headings. Just for the election, you can turn in your absentee ballot request forms to our office now. One thing to note, if you receive one in the mail and you're going to mail it back to us, they're sent out by different parties and organizations. There is no postage over, so we don't pay for the postage once they come. There are certain things our, our office is charged to, but those will not come to us. So make sure and check if you mail them in, put postage on there. Otherwise, they'll probably get pitched by the postal office, because there's no returning address on there either.
Good. Anybody else? Senator Garnett, 1016, help, excuse me.
Just a reminder about the pipeline meetings. Floyd, Mitchell, and Worth counties, which relate to the pipeline here in our county.
Conservation's tonight?
Conservation's tonight, and I assume the agenda is the same.
Yep, yep. Survey the Nelson property. Mr. Otto, you have something?
Oh, I'm sorry. So when I was at the Kefar property, I, I just want to pass it on to you guys. There was a massive amount of people that stopped and thanked me for doing it, getting it done, whatever. But there's also a lot of interest in that property. I just wanted to pass that on to you guys. I mean, there was a guy, I mean, I know a lot of people, a lot of people, but there's people I didn't even know. So I just want to pass it on to you guys. I don't know what you guys are going to do with the property, what the next step is, but I, I was shocked. So this, I mean, I was shocked there was that much interest. You know what I mean? I don't know, yeah, once it was cleaned, I don't know what your next step is of putting that up for sale, or, I mean, I don't know if there's a legal way you got to sell it or whatever. I just wanted to pass that on to you. I was very shocked with the interest in it. I don't know, I don't know what for, I don't know, but it was just a constant question. So I don't know what your next step is to, I don't know, I just wanted to pass it on, so.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, we had a push to comment. He was on a week or two ago that you made a comment in regards to the panic buttons, the panic system that we were talking about.
Sure.
And there's, with that, with the agreement that we have with Johnson Controls, there's 500 licenses. And we, we did a 28-year agreement with Floyd County so that they have 250 of them. And Ryan, I don't know if is in here, but we are not going to, I don't think we're going to use close to the 250 licenses in the county. We're going to be in 100 range or whatever. So if there's an entity that wants to be part of that panic alert system, they can do that. So speak to St. Answor City Hall, or the St. St. Go City Hall, or the libraries, or whatever. They can, now, we're not going to pay for it, but, but you could, and a license is going to be 11 bucks is all it's going to be for the license, now the equipment and stuff. That's where it gets spending to, to do that. That's what we're talking about. But I just want you to know that there is something available that you could be part of that system. If there's a problem with a computer up there or a button, if you want to do that route, push it. Alert goes to the sheriff. So I mean, that's available.
Good, thank you.
Well, nothing else. Senator 1019. Thank you.